I'd like to call the order to the Palm Beach County delegation legislative meeting here at FAU. If all members could please come up to the dais. Could all members please come to the dais? Okay. Could you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, going to be led by Representative Casello?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vicky, can you please call the roll?
Senator Berman.
Here.
Senator Harrell.
Here.
Senator Polsky.
Here.
Senator Powell.
Here.
Representative Caruso.
Here.
Representative Casello.
Here.
Representative Hardy. Representative Roth.
Here.
Representative Silvers.
Here.
Representative Skidmore.
Here.
Representative Slossburg is excused. Representative Snyder.
Here.
Representative Willhite.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Vicky. I'd like to welcome you to the first Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation meeting for the upcoming 2022 Legislative Session. I'd like to thank FAU and President Kelly for being our hosts today. Where is President Kelly? Oh, there he is. Thank you. Thank you, President Kelly. I'd like to thank you all for attending today's hearing, and today we appreciate your attendance and wearing your masks at all times. If you don't want to wear a mask, please, if you don't feel like you can able to continue to do so throughout the full meeting, you may submit your remarks to be read in the record. So if you could please put on your masks, we would appreciate it. We appreciate your cooperation and respect the health and safety of all that are attending. Thank you. On to delegation business. We're going to go around the dais, and we're going to do a quick introduction for each member. We'll start with Rep. Roth at the end here.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Representative Rick Roth. My new nickname is R5, Real Republican, Representative Rick Roth. That's five Rs. I represent Northeast Palm Beach County, District 85. My two staff members are not here today. John Carter is on vacation. He's my district secretary. And Sheila Jackson just had a little hand injury, and she's not able to drive, so I'm flying solo today. Looking very much forward to this upcoming session and enjoy working with the entire delegation, trying to do, get people back to school, be safe, get vaccinated, do all the things we need to do to move this county forward. I am pro-Palm Beach County. I'm a native of Palm Beach County. Let's get to work. Thank you.
I'm Senator Gail Harrell. I represent District 25, which is, includes Martin and St. Lucie County and parts of Palm Beach County on the western side, including the city of Pahokee and Jupiter Farms area. I'm delighted to be here. I have with me today two of my aides, and they're in the back, back here, yes, Carrie Lyra and Karen Sweeney, and we are here to represent you, hear your concerns today, and delighted to be with you. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is John Snyder, and I too was born and raised right here in South Florida. I represent District 82, which is the southern portion of Martin County and the northern portion of Palm Beach County from I-95 to the Atlantic Coast and from County Line Road down to Donald Ross. So great to be here this morning and look forward to hearing from you all.
Good morning. It's not learning how to do that again. Good morning. I'm Joe Casello. I represent District 90, incorporates parts of Boynton Beach, Lantana, Lake Worth, Green Acres, going from 95 out to the Turnpike. We have a scheduled coming up session that's going to be quite interesting with the redistricting going on and along with the inspections of condos and high rises. So there's going to be a lot to talk about this year, and we look forward to it, plus along with the local, local delegation here hearing bills and appropriations. So looking forward to a busy, busy season. Thank you.
Good morning. Senator Tina Polsky, representing District 29, where we are sitting right now. Thank you so much, FAU, for having us in this beautiful facility. I represent all of Boca Raton, Highland Beach, all of Wellington, western parts of Delray, Boynton, Lake Worth, and I also have parts of Broward, excuse me, South Bay and Belgrade, and then I have parts of Broward and Parkland, all of Parkland, Coconut Creek, and a part of Coral Springs. Delighted to be here today with all of you, and I wanted to introduce J.J. Piscadlo and David Siegel, who are here with me. There they are on the side, and Daphne Fernandez was unable to be here today. So I have a great staff. I'm very blessed to have them and happy to be here today. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm State Representative David Silvers for House District 87, Central Palm Beach County. My district encompasses parts of West Palm Beach, Lake Worth, Palm Springs, all Palm Springs, all of Lake Clark Shores, and parts of Green Acres, and I have my legislative aide here, Kristy Ferney. If I didn't introduce her, I'm sure I'd be in trouble.
Good morning, everyone. I'm State Rep. Mike Caruso, District 89. My district runs from, includes all of Boca Raton, runs all the way up along the coastline to Singer Island. I've got my legislative aide here, Walter Boykus, and excited to be here and get back to work for Palm Beach County. Not that the work ever stopped.
Good morning. I'm Senator Lori Berman. I represent District 31, which is Delray to Lake Worth, pretty much the ocean to the Turnpike. I have my legislative assistants here, Abby Ross and Daniel De La Grange are here with me. It is on. Yeah, I hope you all can hear me. I'm glad that we're here in person together, and, but I hope everybody please stay safe because we know COVID has been pretty rampant in Palm Beach County. So thank you all for being here.
Just go ahead. Good morning, everyone. I'm RDMW, Real Democrat Matt Willhite. Glad to be here. I represent the 86th District in the Florida House. Right here in the front row, because he's always in the front of everything, is Tom Valio, my legislative aide. Melissa Santoro is unable to be with us today, but she's the other great part of our team. We represent together Wellington, Locksatchee Groves, Royal Palm, West Palm Beach, Haverhill, and unincorporated Palm Beach County. Thank you for everyone for being here. Please be safe and be vigilant about protecting each yourself and each and everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, everyone. I am State Senator Bobby Powell Jr., representing Senate District 30 in Palm Beach County. Glad to be here with you all during the delegation meeting. My staff is here. Kirsty Miles, please stand up and raise your hand. And Ms. Diane Andre. I like to believe that this is the best staff on this side of heaven. We call them Team GTJD. Get the job done. We're excited to be here with you all today. Please remember to like us, follow us on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter, as well as YouTube. Also, I would like to take this moment to recognize who is with us, with us here today, the Vice Mayor of Palm Beach County, Rob Weinrock. As well as my good friend and colleague, Commissioner Mac Bernard. I believe that a life of service is a life that counts. Thank you for having us here this morning.
Good morning. I'm State Representative Kelly Skidmore. I represent District 81, which is west of the Turnpike, Boca Raton, Delray Beach, Boynton Beach, Lake Worth, a tiny bit of Wellington, and then straight out to the Glades, where I share Pahokee with Senator Harrell, and I share Belgrade and South Bay with Senator Polsky. With me today are my two legislative aides, Dr. Gwen Gonzalez and Amy Chamberlain. Our position out in the Glades is open at the moment. Dr. Robert Reese has recently been appointed the City Manager for the city of Belgrade. So we are looking for someone to fill that spot, and if anybody is interested, see Gwen Gonzalez right over there. President Kelly, it is so exciting to be here. I really got in the mood for football when I came through the doors. I miss being here. I am a season ticket holder, so those of you who have not been to an FAU football game, go see Ryan Britton, and he'll hook you up. Thanks.
Thank you, Rep. Thank you, Rep. Skidmore. We had a late addition. Rep. Hardy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Representative Omari Hardy. I represent District 88. That encompasses a lot of urban communities from Delray Beach through Boynton Beach, Lake Worth, Lantana, can't forget Lantana, going all the way up through West Palm Beach Riviera, Beach Lake Park, Mangonia Park. Very happy to see you all, very happy to get to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Rep. Hardy. Rep. Casello wants to make a quick addition to the introduction.
Thank you, Chair. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention my staff. Equals Senator Powell's staff, I would say, in my opinion, but I would like to introduce my legislative aide, Troy Ross, and my district aide, Brian Bees. Thank you.
Thank you, Rep. Casello. Before we go on to the election of Chair and Vice Chair, I'd like to give President Kelly an opportunity to say a few words. President Kelly?
Thank you, and good morning. Out of the fear of having a picture taken without a mask, I'm going to keep mine on. We've asked everybody over and over and over, you cannot believe how many times we've asked people to please keep the mask on on campus. It is really great to see all of you all in person again. For us, as people who are always wanting to be close to young people and working with young people, the void on our campus during the COVID time was very difficult emotionally and every, every other way, because you're so used to engaging with students all the time, helping them on the difficult task, and it just isn't the same through Zoom. I mean, everybody can say Zoom went great, and it did. We were able to educate people and continue educating people, but it's a lot better when you can do those kinds of things in person. I hope you all know that there was a nice ceremony happening here soon, which is the dedication of the football field to Howard Schnellenberger. Without Howard Schnellenberger, this building wouldn't exist, that field wouldn't exist, and the FAU knowledge across the United States wouldn't exist. Everybody knows that this is the house that Howard built, and we're happy to honor his legacy. You're on one of six of our campuses. You can't get more than 10 miles from the Atlantic Ocean on any of the campuses, so it's really a very unique setting. This is by far the largest campus with about 25,000 students on this campus and about 30,000 students total, and about 170,000 alumni who live in this area. So you've got a lot of alums, and I always love having our alums come back. Our focus has been very heavily on student success for a long time. It's not something new, but this spring, it was an extra effort, I think, that the team went through. We were able to graduate 3,200 students in the spring. We did it here in the stadium. It's the first graduation we have ever attempted in a stadium. You know, with Florida, the risk of rainfall and what a terrible day that could turn into. So thankfully, we were able to get through that, and we're back to doing indoor graduations now. This summer, we did 2,000 students in the K auditorium. I also want to thank you for the tremendous support during the legislative session. This is one of the best years we've had legislatively ever. We were ranked among the top 40 universities in the United States for social mobility. It's a recognition that this university serves people from all backgrounds, something we're very proud of. We have eliminated the traditional achievement gaps and the service gaps so that everyone indeed has an opportunity to succeed. Our most recent success can be attributed to many goals that we set in our strategic plan for the institution in 2015. We're halfway through that plan now, and some of the things I'll give you now are really achievements from that plan. Our median wages employed after one year is now $41,000. That was $36,000 when we started. Right now, the net tuition cost average is $7,690. That was $9,570 in 2014, so a huge improvement in what we're doing there. Our four-year graduation rate had a 10% increase this year and a 28% increase since the strategic plan was adopted. So students are getting finished earlier, too. Our research expenditures hit an all-time record for FAU this year. It's kind of surprising in a COVID year that you would break a record, but it maybe it gave people more time to focus on their research, too. $71.3 million. That is more than double what we did six years ago. We had a 24% jump in our external awards to $78.5 million. And thanks to all of you, there is a new high school being built across campus for one of the greatest high schools in America. It was a very aged facility. Just to tell you about that high school and the middle school, it's actually being built, too. Those students produced this past year 56 National Merit Scholars. It's intentional. These are not, you know, just very unique kids that all came to one place for a purpose. They're really trained on how to become a National Merit Scholar. They're trained on how to compete at everything you do, whether it's how to write a play, whether it's to sing, whether it's to go to a track meet, and they do win track meets, believe it or not, as scholarly as they are. So we have the highest number of kindergarten-ready student scores among the schools in the state of Florida. The middle and high school research program continues to lead the nation with more than 50 peer-reviewed refereed journal articles published in journals like the New England Journal of Medicine and the Journal of Leukocyte Biology. That is usually for PhD students. So it's the belief that you don't have to be older to be better. Thanks in large part to your support, we received $17.3 million in the 2021 appropriations for the Henderson School. That school is under construction right now, so if you see piles of dirt on campus right next to the school, that's your work, at work for these young people. We also made a focus. The Board of Governors asked each of the universities to come up with a strategic focus area. We decided that our focus was going to be on applied artificial intelligence and big data analytics. We're in the process of a large number of grants that we're pursuing along these lines, including one, which is the largest proposal we've ever submitted anywhere, which is to make smart cities. How do you make a city electronically smart so it knows everything that's going on, when it's going on, and how it's going on? In the 2022 Legislative Session, we'll be asking for your support again for the successes we've had. We're looking for a new capital request for a health science training facility. It is time for FAU and our med school and our College of Nursing and others to have an opportunity to do clinical work here on campus. We're in the process of searching for a new dean for the College of Medicine, and that will be a mantra for that dean to look forward to, is to help us to begin to develop clinical trial work right here on campus. As you know, the nation is facing severe nursing shortages, and our College of Nursing is packed full, the maximum number of students that we can accept, and nurses are taking on more and more responsibility in the hospitals. Many of you have been working in the hospital-related systems and seen what's gone on during COVID. The nurses and doctors are exhausted from the efforts that they put forward, but there is another whole group, young people, coming because they want to pursue that profession, and they believe in what they're doing. I'm excited about the future of FAU. Obviously, I wouldn't be here if I wasn't. The problems that we've had dealing with COVID have been minor in, in terms of the relationship to what it means to the success of a student. We went completely virtual. We figured out how to do it. We figured out how to improve our graduation rates while we were doing it, and now we're back live in person with the people we care so much about. We could not be doing the job we're doing without you. And the number of times you've stepped up with just kind words, the number of times you've complimented our faculty or others in the university, it means a lot because you're such an important part of the community and an important part of the leadership of this whole area. So from my heart, I thank you for all you've done to allow our students to become great successes that will continue to serve this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Kelly.
Questions? If you do.
Does the delegate, anybody from the delegation? Representative Hardy?
Thank you. And Mr. Kelly, thank you for your, President Kelly, thank you for your presentation here. I, I just have a question, and it pertains to the online learning that you had. You know, educators at every level have had to learn a lot. Administrators at every level of education have had to learn a lot about how to do education online, and I'm wondering, because FAU has been pretty pioneering in the business school in particular with online education and expanding the reach of your education programs, I'm wondering if you feel that there's an opportunity to apply what you, your staff, your faculty have learned about online education to further expand opportunities for folks who may not live in the Palm Beach County area or in South Florida, but who might want to obtain a degree from FAU and who are willing to put in that, that, that work?
That is certainly the case. As you're mentioning, online offers capacity to reach to people from quite a distance, so it doesn't have to be somebody who is close enough to drive to the campus. They can really be anywhere. And so the success of the online programs has been a key driver, honestly, in our overall success. And when the students from a different place, or let's say somebody from Wyoming is online with us, they're also online with the other students who are right here, and so there's a learning that takes place between those students, because not only do we teach online, they're able to meet online and have discussions online, and so you're getting a chance to people to meet each other and have conversations that never existed before. I don't personally believe online should be the replacement for all the in-person. There are some people that believe that that's, that's an adequate replacement. I know that the interaction that happens in a classroom, the interaction between a faculty member and the students is really important to a person's growth and development, and so we'll probably move forward with a lot of blended models where portions of things might be online and available to a larger audience, and then, of course, the indirect, in-person, which we were chosen as the outstanding university in the country for undergraduate research in 2017. That's because students were working together on research projects elbow to elbow, and that's a little bit harder to do if you're on Zoom.
Hello?
I just had one more question. So last legislative session, we passed up a bill and it became law, and it was primarily about, it's hard to describe what it's about, but it's, it's about viewpoint diversity on academic campuses and the culture with respect to whether people feel free to express their opinions. Do you, have, have you or your faculty given much thought as to, as to how that, that piece of legislation might affect, you know, your ability to do your jobs, your faculty's ability to teach with some freedom? And also, I worry about your Title IX obligations and about the obligation that faculty members may have under this piece of legislation to not shield people from speech that is unwelcome, which is the very definition of sexual harassment in some cases. I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if you've given any thought to how this piece of legislation might affect your, your operations here and the achievement of your mission?
I assure you, all of the universities are definitely interested in trying to figure out exactly how that's interpreted. Let me share with you just a response we have. We have the thing that goes through the center of the campus, we call the breezeway. It's a covered walkway that goes through the entire campus. It's a student gathering spot. Everybody, it's so wide, it's as wide as this, so students have the opportunity to put their clubs up and all these things. It's a huge dialogue that happens up and down there. So we decided to set up this year a place where there would constantly be dialogues. There's a space where you could have these dialogues on the breezeway, where students are passing by and others are passing by. So if you can become tolerant of listening to another person's viewpoint, even if you completely disagree, and stay in yourself, not get all angry and mad, but stay within yourself for that discussion, can you find some common understanding? We're starting that program right now as a response to being able to have these open dialogues and not to have such restrictions placed on the conversation and allow the students to take the conversation where they want to, with some guidance about how does one have dialogue. You can do it as a very angry person yelling at someone, or you can do it as a listener trying to understand their viewpoint, and how does that compete or maybe support your viewpoint? So that's a strategy we're taking this year as a learning strategy that I think is going to be very successful. We just presented that to the Board of Governors.
Thank you, President Kelly.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you all being here.
President Kelly, there is one more question. Sorry. Representative Roth.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I may have missed this, and this is a follow-up to Representative Hardy's question about Henderson High School, and I may have missed it. So if you feel comfortable taking off your mask while, while answering or at least talking more clearly into the mic so I can hear you, I think one of the things we did this year that was, that was way long overdue is that we started saying that we're going to, we're going to reimburse colleges for dual enrollment. If you could speak to that issue, you know, what you're doing at FAU with dual enrollment and, and the necessity for that reimbursement and, and how we can move forward, because you did mention very clearly in your opening remarks that one of your goals is to hold down the cost of college tuition. So if you could speak to dual enrollment, I'd appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
Dual enrollment, you know, has kind of a two-edged piece to it, of course. When we duly enroll these students, they are high school students, but they're taking college classes. The college classes aren't priced differently, and so they're getting a huge benefit, honestly, by being able to accelerate their careers. It would be a great, great help, particularly to us, because I think we do more of this dual enrollment with high school than anybody in the state, but those students are not paying the traditional college education cost. They're filling seats in classes that might have been left vacant. And so anything we could do to recognize that that is also, it's not just a high school experience, it is a college experience, and they're getting college credits while they're in high school. Those are huge benefits for any student, and as you can imagine, the demand is enormous to get in that school. So I think you would find that anybody that decided to do that, there are four of these lab schools in the state of Florida, anybody that decided to do that in an aggressive way would find that students will graduate a lot sooner. They will be extraordinary students that try to get into those kinds of programs, and the cost reimbursement then doesn't become the university trying to figure out how few do we, can we take, because we lose revenue on every single one.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rep. Roth. President Kelly, hold on one second.
Yes.
Representative Caruso, I think you want to make a comment?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. President Kelly, I just wanted to say thank you for your leadership, tremendous leadership. Thank you for the great impact you've had on FAU, Boca Raton, and Palm Beach County with all your dedication and hard work. So thank you. It's, you walk on this campus, you know, since you've gotten here, and you don't even recognize the place, and we really appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you. It's been a great team effort. We have a tremendous group of people here. Everybody's committed to the bog metrics and being the best we can possibly be. Thank you all very much for coming. Anything, anytime you ever need to use FAU for a meeting venue, it's your home.
Thank you so much, President Kelly. So we're going to move on to the election of Chair and Vice Chair for the Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation. According to the delegation's bylaws, the Office of Chair shall alternate yearly between a Democrat and a Republican member, and the election shall be by roll call with majority of members present and voting. With a quorum being present, I'm, I would like to open the floor for nominations for the Office of Chair for the Palm Beach County delegation. At this point, I'd like to open the nominations for Chair. Rick Roth? Representative Roth?
Thank you, Chair, and at this time, I would like to nominate my colleague, Representative Caruso. I think he will, he could do a great job. He's a very influential representative. He works well with the delegation, and he even was able to pull off having the meeting here in Boca Raton, which was his preference, before he even became Chair. So I nominate the Chair. I nominate Mike Caruso to be Chair.
Thank you, Representative Roth. Representative Casello?
Chair, I would like to second that motion.
Thank you very much. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Seeing none, I will close the nomination process. A yes vote in favor of the nomination and no vote would be in opposition. Vicky, will you please call the roll for a recorded vote?
Senator Berman.
Yes.
Senator Harrell.
Yes.
Senator Polsky.
Yes.
Senator Powell.
Yes.
Representative Caruso.
Yep.
Yes, good. I'm glad. Representative Casello.
Yes.
Representative Hardy.
Yes.
Representative Roth.
Yes.
Representative Silvers.
Yes.
Representative Skidmore.
Yes.
Representative Snyder.
Yes.
Representative Willhite. Mr. Chair, the majority.
Thank you very much, Vicky. Having received a majority of votes by members present, Rep. Mike Caruso, even duly elected Chair of Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation. Now, at this point, I will open the floor for nominations for the Office of Vice Chair of the Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation. Senator Berman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is my honor and pleasure to nominate Senator Tina Polsky for Vice Chair of our delegation. Tina is an attorney and a mediator, and she has been quite a legislator, an effective legislator with those skills. She's shown leadership in her bills and appropriations, and I am sure she will be a benefit for Palm Beach County, and so I nominate her for Vice Chair.
Thank you, Senator Berman. Anybody want to second that? Senator, Senator Powell? Thank you. Are there any other nominations on the, from the floor? Seeing none, I will close the nomination process. Just a reminder, a yes vote is in favor of nomination and a no vote is in opposition. Just a reminder, a yes vote is in favor of nomination and a no vote is in opposition. Vicki, will you please call the roll for a recorded vote?
Senator Berman.
Yes.
Senator Harrell.
Yes.
Senator Polsky.
Yes.
Senator Powell.
Yes.
Representative Caruso.
Yes.
Representative Casello.
Yes.
Representative Hardy.
Yes.
Representative Roth.
Yes.
Representative Silvers.
Yes.
Representative Skidmore.
Yes.
Representative Snyder.
Yes.
Representative Willhite.
Yes.
The majority.
Having, thank you, Vicki. Having received a majority of votes by members present, Senator Polsky, you have now been elected Vice Chair of the Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation. At this time, it is my pleasure to turn the gavel over to the new Chair, Mike Caruso, to preside over the remainder of our delegation meeting. There you go, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Silvers. You know, I just wanted to say a few words, and I appreciate the delegation's confidence in me. But Chair Silvers, you know, you've always demonstrated great leadership, character, and integrity, and always showed the need to work with people, not against them. And I want to thank you for that. You've kept the aura here in the delegation. You kept the partisanship to a minimum and kept the focus on the needs of Palm Beach County. So I thank you for your service, and it's my hope to carry on your great work. So if you'd like to say a few words in parting.
Thank you, Chair Caruso, for those very kind words. I may have said these words when I was first elected Chair last year, and I just want to echo those same sentiments. It's an honor to be here in the legislature and on the dais, but to be a member of the leadership and to be the Chair for the last year, it's really quite a humbling experience. And like now Chair Caruso mentioned, I do like to put everybody on the dais, everybody's interests at heart whenever I take on that position of Chair and putting out any type of communication as such. So it's been an absolute honor. I love working with all of you. It really is a humbling and great experience. So thank you so much. It's been great.
Thank you, Chair Silvers. I'd like to thank everyone for coming here today. It's an honor to serve as your Chair of the Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation, and again, I thank you for your trust and confidence in me. I'd also like to thank President Kelly, he might have skipped out, not sure, but and Florida Atlantic University for hosting us today in our first delegation meeting for the 2022 Legislative Session. It's great to be here and see everybody in person, master not masked. It's great to be here. For those who don't know me, I'm State Rep. Mike Caruso, and I represent Boca Raton, all the way up the coastline to Singer Island. I served as Vice Chair of the delegation with former Chair Silvers, and we had a very successful session during one of the most chaotic times that I can remember due to the COVID-19 pandemic. As Chair, it goes without saying that we have a lot of work to do. We've got some serious issues with infrastructure, with sea level rise, with building integrity of our coastline buildings, and so we've got a lot of work to do. And even up in the northern end of the county with the submerged land issues that are so prevalent. I'm excited to share with you all that with the delegation's backing, I believe we'll bring some much-needed help to the county. Vice Chair, Senator Polsky, I'm looking forward to working with you too. We've worked together over the past few years and very successfully, even working together on some appropriations like out there at Boca Hab in West Boca. So it's going to be an extremely productive year, and I look forward to working with all of you. Lastly, I'd like to thank Vicki for your hard work and commitment. Every, you know, we have our weekly meetings with the delegation on the phone, including the U.S. Congress members and senators, and you keep it organized, you keep it, you know, scheduled, on schedule, and marching forward, and all the hard work you do for us and for the county. I don't think we could do it without you. So thank you so much. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Senator, to Vice Chair Senator Polsky, if you'd like to take a few minutes and make some comments.
Thank you. I wasn't prepared to do that, but I appreciate the delegation's support of me. It's been an honor to be entering my fourth year in the legislature, and I really enjoy our delegation. We have a big diverse one, and I'm very proud to be a part of it. Thank you for your confidence in me, and I look forward to working with all of you going forward.
Thank you. I understand we have Commissioner Bob Leinroth here, and we hadn't recognized Vice Mayor Andy Thompson. He's in the back, he's always in the back, but he's here, and I'd like to invite each of them to say a few words if you'd like.
Chair, Mr. Chair, and certainly congratulations to you and Senator Polsky on your appointments as the leadership of the delegation. On behalf of Mayor Kerner and the entire Board of County Commissioners, we welcome you to this great institution. You know, FAU has certainly improved and grown over the last seven years under President Kelly's tenure. We're very excited to have him as the president of this university, and certainly, as he was discussing the metrics before, we are seeing great improvements in the level of education, and we certainly hope that you're able to continue to support this university and the entire state university system. As you know, we recently, as a body, have started the preliminary discussions with UF to bring them to Palm Beach County. We will potentially be offering them land in West Palm Beach to site the university and metropolitan campus for their master's program, and we're excited about that opportunity. Business development requires a skilled workforce, and with partnerships with FAU, with Palm Beach State College, and the entire university system, we know that we can raise the level of the skills of our residents to make them ready for the companies that are coming here. Our county is benefiting from the pandemic. As much as we have hurt and as much as we are dealing with the COVID pandemic and the Delta variant, we are red hot. Red hot in that everybody from the Northeast seems to have discovered us, they are moving here. Real estate prices have gone through the roof. We've seen about a 30% bump in the last six months. That's going to put a lot of pressure on us as far as workforce housing, and we're going to need your partnership to help us in that regard. Sodowsky has been something that has been raided too often, and we need protection of those dollars to help us be able to work with our employers here to be able to keep the employees within Palm Beach County. So we are certainly looking for your partnership. We also know that you appreciate Home Rule and appreciate the fact that there are certain things that we hope that we can handle here at the local level. But we certainly appreciate your partnership, and we'll look to your guidance and your leadership as far as the condos, as far as recertification. Obviously, that's been a very relevant topic since what happened in Miami. We are hoping that we can have a uniform process for ensuring the safety of our residents. I don't want to preempt our lobbyists as far as what we have as far as a formal program, but certainly we are looking to your leadership and your help in that regard. I thank each and every one of you for your representation of this county. We know that you have Palm Beach County in your hearts, and we appreciate everything you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And now Vice Mayor Andy Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Congratulations on your appointment. Congratulations to our State Senator Tina Polsky on your appointment as Vice Chair. I'll be very brief. I'm Andy Thompson. I'm not the Vice Mayor, just simply a city council member. I appreciate the promotion, though, Mr. Chair. You all do a fantastic job representing this county in the state legislature. Keep it up. We love having you here in the city of Boca Raton. Welcome. Come back whenever you like. I know President Kelly left, but we'll work it out. We love to have you guys here. Thank you for the work that you do. You have a lot of important issues that you have before you that you need to be working on, so please get to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the approval of the minutes. Members, are there any edits, additions, deletions that need to be made to the January 7, 2021 Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation Meeting Minutes? Is there a second? Second. All in favor of approving the minutes? Say yea.
Yea.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. I'm going to turn it over to Vicki for a second here.
I want to take a moment to thank all of my delegation members for being so attentive and concerned about the residents of Palm Beach County over the last 18 months with COVID. It's been really trying for all of us to keep us safe. And I would like to also take a moment to introduce the new delegation aide. It's Dr. Christopher Stubbs, and he has come to us from Senator Powell's office, and I thought he was in the room. Oh, there is. He's back in the back. Thank you, Christopher.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to public comments, and if there's anyone wishing to address the delegation during the public comments section of today's agenda, if time allows, please fill out a blue request form and provide it to Dr. Stubbs with the delegation office.
We told you that we have the presentation. I can send Senator Anwar to.
Okay. Excuse me, we're going to have some presentations first. Let's see. Beverly? Okay, it's not on my screen. Rep. Casello?
Yes.
And Senator Berman. Okay.
Thank you, Chair. Caruso, Vicki, for allowing us a few minutes for this presentation of Senate Bill 184, called "The Purple Alert." Senate Bill 184, which had recently been signed into law by the governor, established the purple alert, which will fill the gaps between the amber alert, which services those under 18, and the silver alert, which services those over 60. The purple alert will be activated when the individual with cognitive or developmental disability that is not related to substance abuse goes missing and whose disappearance is a credible threat of imminent danger of serious bodily harm to themselves. You know, too many bills that get passed in Tallahassee have no face to them. Unfortunately, this one does. This bill was inspired by the family and friends of Joshua Marshall, a 30-year-old Port St. Lucie man who is nonverbal with developmental disabilities, was found dead in August of 2018 in a pond near where he lived. Some of you already heard of Joshua, but for those who haven't, I would like to share his story. Joshua became disabled when he was 14 months old due to a virus that caused heart failure and lack of oxygen to his brain. Joshua and his father had just moved to Port St. Lucie. He had been there just over a week. Josh wandered from the house late at night. He wandered for a while and found his way to a 7-Eleven gas station. He was there for well over an hour. He cannot ask for help, did not speak or write. The workers in the store had no idea who he was or why he was out front. People saw him wearing no shoes, walking with a lopsided gait due to his disability. He was distraught. They assumed he had been drinking. They completely misread the situation. He was crying and barefoot, and no one helped. They did not know that he was disabled. They did not know he desperately needed help. He finally wandered across a busy intersection to a fire station with a pond. Josh was very attracted to water, and he walked right into the pond, which was only 30 feet from the fire station. He drowned. This is why the purple alert is so important, helping that segment of population, of those of the Joshua Marshals. I would like to thank Senator Berman for sponsoring this bill in the Senate, Representative Willhite for getting me through it on that House floor and through committees as my co-prime sponsor in the House, and for every member of this delegation for voting for this important legislation. But more importantly, I would like to thank Beverly Marshall, who is with us today with the children, Tina and Frank. Beverly used her loss and pain to bring this idea forward, to see it through until it became law. She's an example of how an everyday citizen can make real change for their community. Thank you again, Beverly. Without you and your advocacy, none of this would have been possible. We know you would have made Joshua proud. I would like to call Beverly up to the front here along with her children, Frank and Tina, if they would, and make this presentation to you, a framed copy of the bill honoring your son Joshua, along with Senator Berman.
Thank you very much for all of you that are here that voted for this bill. Thank you for the community for your support, and I know that this is going to save lives and it is going to, it is going to help our population of people with disabilities who have never had this type of protection before. And this is one of the biggest fears of families like mine who do have someone in their family that is disabled, is that they wander off and something horrible happens to them. So thank you very much for your compassion and for voting for this lifesaving bill, and thank you all for your support. And thank you, Senator Berman and Senator Casello, very much for supporting this bill and presenting it to the Florida Legislature, so thank you.
And I'll just wrap up this discussion by saying that this is a true example of citizen advocacy, and that's what we are here in the legislature for, to help people. And so I'm so happy to be able to sponsor this bill and to have such a wonderful co-sponsor and a prime co-sponsor and to do what we could to help children like Joshua Marshall. So thank you all.
It's great legislation, it's very easy legislation to vote for and support, and great job on the, on what you've done. Let's see, we're going to move on to hear from Dave Ehrenberg, our State Attorney from the 15th Judicial Circuit. So, State Prosecutor?
Thank you all, thank you.
Everybody claps, you know.
That's very nice. Thank you very much. Now, is it, should I remove, lower the mask or not?
That would be fine.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chairman, thanks very much for the introduction, for the applause, I appreciate it, and members of the delegation, it's good to see everyone, and congratulations on your new role, and for Senator Polsky, congratulations. I'm Dave Ehrenberg, State Attorney for Palm Beach County, and I'm joined today by my Chief Assistant State Attorney, Al Johnson. He's here, he is the head of our Sober Homes Task Force, which has helped clean up the sober home and drug treatment industries here in Palm Beach County and returned the drug treatment industry to where it was before. You had the, where it's overrun by the rogue sober homes and corruption in the drug treatment industry. We're now amongst the best in the country, if not the best, and we have the best laws in the country here in the state of Florida, and that started with you. This delegation is the one that lobbied the legislature for the one-time, nonrecurring appropriation to start our task force, and it was so successful that they did it again a second year, and then you helped pass the laws. And then you helped pass the laws that we needed to reform the industry. And now the laws are the model for the rest of the country. So kudos to you guys, and in particular Senator Harrell. She has been our sponsor in the Senate, has done an amazing job getting these bills through. Even though these bills end up without any opposition, you know how hard it is to get these bills up on the calendar and through, and we give you a lot of gratitude for that. And our chairman, our chair, our sponsor in the House, is you, Representative Caruso. So thank you very much for your sponsorship in the House, you've been able to shepherd these bills through, and to all the members of the delegation for your help. Couldn't have done it without you. And we have more legislation, now that I buttered you up, we've got more legislation on sober homes coming up, sponsored by Senator Harrell and Representative Caruso. We have a bill that will help improve the laws in this area. It does three things, I'll try to make it quick. Number one, it requires providers to provide sober homes, the names of the sober homes they refer to. In that way, it's public. You have to put it in a database, because right now, you know, the law allows referrals, but there is no database that discloses this information. Also, the new bill would limit the number of people overseen by a certified recovery residence administrator. So we have this law that allows for certified recovery residence administrators, but they can oversee hundreds of people, which is, are sort of counterproductive, so it would limit that number. And then third and finally, it requires treatment centers to give property back to the patients when they leave. So a lot of times someone will leave treatment and then they can't get their stuff back. They should be able to get their stuff when they leave the treatment center. Al, is there anything I left out on that?
Oh, yes, there is also some proviso language.
So, the local governments are, in our view, allowed to require sober homes to be certified, to require the certification of sober homes in their communities. But they have to jump through a bunch of hoops. One of them is to have a study. You've got to go through this expensive study. And to our knowledge, Delray Beach and Palm Beach County both have done that. But what about all the other communities in our county and throughout the state? So we are asking for a proviso, a $40,000 appropriation that would create a statewide study. That way, that study can be used by all the communities around the state. And that can save so much money for all these individual communities who can't afford to do a study, but if the state does it and pays for it, then everyone else can adopt it. And so that's something that we're going to ask for your support. All right? And then one other thing on that before I get to some SVU talk, is you may have seen that we charged an individual who we believe was motivated by prejudice, who defaced the LGBT streetscape in Delray Beach. He had his pickup truck and he did this burnout over the streetscape. But because of state law, we could not charge that individual with a hate crime, because who was the owner of that streetscape but the city of Delray Beach? And cities do not have sexual orientations, and so we could not charge with a hate crime. We instead charged him with a felony on the amount of damage he caused, a third-degree felony, and reckless driving, a first-degree misdemeanor. But if we could charge him with a hate crime, it would have been an enhanced penalty where it would be a second-degree felony. And so I would ask, and I've spoken to Senator Berman and Senator Polsky about this, to look at the hate crime laws, to allow local governments to be victims of hate crimes, because right now I think there's a gap in the law. If an individual owned that streetscape, that would be a hate crime, but not because the city owns it. So I would urge you, if we can work together to try to pass that revision to the state hate crimes law, I think it would go a long way. And then finally, I've got with me today Brianna Coakley, who is Assistant State Attorney, who is in charge of our SVU Special Victims Unit. Brianna, can you stand up? She is the most knowledgeable person I know when it comes to issues of sex crimes against children or adults, and in her practice, she has found that there is at least six areas that need to be changed. And I will not spend too much time on it, because my time is limited, but just in brief. And if you'd like to have follow-up, we'd encourage you to perhaps sponsor some of these bills. First, we need to clarify definitions of the private areas of the anatomy to constitute, what constitutes sexual battery, because there's a current split amongst jurisdictions, amongst the counties, within the court systems, that lets certain defendants free depending on where the crime occurs. So they could have an inappropriate touching in one county, and that's charged as a lesser offense than in a different county, because of the confusion in the courts, the conflict in the courts. We think that needs to be clarified. Number two, we believe that we need to protect victims who are over age 16 when they are victims of lewd and lascivious conduct. If you're under 16 and you're a victim of lewd and lascivious conduct, it is charged seriously as a second-degree felony, but if you're over 16, we can't charge it as lewd and lascivious at all. In fact, we can only charge it as a simple battery, which is a misdemeanor. So we believe that minors over the age of 16 should be given the same protection, or at least similar protection, as those who are younger, or at least make it a third-degree felony for the lewd and lascivious touching of a 16- or 17-year-old. Right now, like I said, it's just a misdemeanor. Number three, we need to clarify that adult victims of sexual battery are treated the same way as children in allowing the admission of prior similar acts. So currently, when a defendant is on trial for sex battery against a child, the defendant's prior sexual conduct is admissible. You can show, oh, look what he did over here, that's admissible. And the Legislature intended that to be the same for adults, adult victims, but the courts have not seen it that way. And so we just ask for consistency based on what the Legislature always intended. Number four, we need to correct a discrepancy in the law. If someone commits sexual battery and says, you know, I have a knife, and uses that as a way to commit sexual battery, that is treated as punishable by life in prison. That's the law. If you commit sexual battery and threaten someone with a weapon, but if you threaten someone by saying, "You better do this or I will kill you," that's not treated as seriously. It's a first-degree felony. We think they should both be treated the same, whether you threaten you have a gun or whether you threaten to kill someone, it should be treated the same. And then, second to last, we think that there should be an enhanced penalty for health care providers who commit a sexual assault against a patient in their care, like Larry Nassar, the Olympic doctor. Right now, there is an enhanced penalty for law enforcement and for teachers who commit sexual battery of someone in their care, but not for health care workers, and we think that should be changed. And then finally, we have this case where we were prosecuting a child pornography, and we found that this same sick individual had committed sexual battery on women and children who were unconscious or sleeping. And because the victims, the adult victims, did not know that they were victimized, because they were either unconscious or sleeping, they didn't report it until we found it on video eight to 10 years later, but that was past the statute of limitations. We believe that if someone is a victim of sexual battery and they're unconscious or sleeping and they don't know about it until later, that that person should not be cleared, the defendant, because of a statute of limitations. That person should be held accountable, as long as that person reports it after it is discovered. So fortunately, there's a happy ending to that story, is that the defendant was charged with other crimes. We charged him with child pornography and other crimes, but there's still a gap in the law, and we hope that you can help us fix it. So with that, I want to thank Brianna for all that. I'm sorry for going long, and thank you. I'm honored to be your State Attorney. It's an amazing job. This is my third term, and serving the people of Palm Beach County is the highest honor. So thank you very much.
And we've got a few questions here from the delegation. Senator Berman?
Thank you, State Attorney Aronberg, and I just wanted to acknowledge that my office is working with Brianna Coakley also on a human trafficking bill, and we're also looking into some of the issues you raised about the hate crimes law. And just want to continue to work with you, really appreciate you bringing all these good suggestions here, and if anybody is interested in the human trafficking law for a House sponsor, would be happy to have a House sponsor on that issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I want to thank Senator Berman. In fact, Brianna told me she was working with you in your office on that, and I neglected to mention that. So thank you very much for all that you do, Senator Berman.
And more questions from Senator Harrell.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and I do want to thank very sincerely State Attorney Aronberg for his hard work on the sober home issue. This has been a 10-year endeavor, I think, that we have been involved with this, and really in cleaning up the industry, and I'm happy to sponsor that legislation. As we move forward on the Sober Home Task Force, I want to make sure, I don't know where the funding is coming from, and if we still have state funding on that, if you need an appropriation on that, and perhaps we need to tweak the name a bit, because it's not just sober homes that we're addressing. We're really addressing the entire rehabilitation and addiction industry and the rules and regulations that we need to have to make sure that we are protecting patients who are really trying to work their way through a substance abuse issue. So I would ask that the Sober Home Task Force relook at their name and make sure that we have, we are able to continue the funding of this, and whether you either do it locally or we do it statewide.
Mr. Chairman, Senator Harrell, thank you. On the funding, we can always use funding, we do this in-house now. After the Legislature stopped funding it after the second year, we took it in-house, and we pay for it ourselves, and our budgets are stretched, but we would welcome any recurring or nonrecurring funding for it, because it's been a big success. We've charged, we prosecuted over 120 people and had, I think, 80 convictions so far, and we have these new laws, and we cleaned up the industry. And you're correct that the name of the Sober Homes Task Force is in itself a misnomer, because it doesn't just apply to sober homes. It's much broader than that. The name was created at the very beginning, and it has been an issue, and that's something we should consider. It's just that that's how we're known now, it's our brand, and so perhaps it should be changed, especially when our Senate sponsor requests it.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I could just also address further, as we go into the whole arena of drug abuse and addiction and how we deal with that. Again, I want to commend Palm Beach County. You all have been innovators in this, and working with Southeast Behavioral Health Network has been a key component, as well as our law enforcement agencies here. So we need to move that statewide, and anything I can do to assist that and make sure that we take the lessons learned and what we have done here in Palm Beach County and really spread it across the state. So I'd be happy to work with you on those types of things. And also, I'm very interested in some of this legislation concerning the sex crimes. So we'll talk further about that.
Great, thank you. And if you'd like, I have extra copies of some of the proposals, and if you signal me afterwards, I'll make sure that you get them.
Thank you.
Representative Wilhite, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll continue using letters, S A D B, State Attorney Dave Aronberg. Thank you for all your hard work.
Wait, can you go over those initials again?
State Attorney Dave, oh, DA.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Good grief.
DA, DA.
Yeah, DA, sorry. You know, you keep bringing good things to this delegation and to the state. I know Senator Harrell and I think filed the husband-wife privileges bill a couple of years ago. We couldn't get it through, but you keep working on things that are looking out for people and working for people and protecting people, and you do a great job at doing that. So again, this year, if you need some help with something, our office is more than willing to help with whatever we can, because we've seen not only the hard work you put in, but the success that it's brought to it, to this state and to this area. So I appreciate it and know that we're still committed to helping you and your office. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative, I really appreciate your kind words.
Thank you. Senator Polsky?
Thank you, Chair. Hello, State Attorney Dave Aronberg. Just as you mentioned briefly, my office is working on some legislation to deal with that very small loophole in the hate crimes law, where the devastating act that happened in Delray Beach, where the fact that the city owned it doesn't mean it's not a hate crime. So we are going to work to find the language to cover that loophole, keep it very narrow, and hopefully that will be something based on that particular incident that everyone can get behind. So I would appreciate the delegation's support on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Senator Polsky. You know, that issue has been in the press a lot, and there's been a lot of misunderstandings about what the hate crime law is and what it isn't, but it's clear, it does not apply when the city is the owner of something. But yet, if an individual owned it, game on. So that's a loophole that needs to be closed.
State Attorney Aronberg, you're a popular guy. We've got a few more. We'll start with Representative Skidmore. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nice to see you, State Attorney, S A D A. I really appreciate all the work that you have done on the Sober Homes Task Force and the opioid task force as well. And of course, we have a history of working together on the PDMP, so we're both dedicated to cleaning this up. I have a question for either you or Mr. Miller.
Johnson, you mean?
Johnson, sorry, sorry. I said it wrong. We have legislation that was created through a program we call "There Ought to Be a Law" that we, Senator Polsky and I have done in the high schools in our area. And last year, we had legislation that came from that contest that would allow individuals who are in recovery in Florida to get a fee waiver to attend college. So we are going to sponsor that legislation again, and for those who are here in the state of Florida in recovery and working, they would just be able to have in-state tuition for our state college system. That's something that was brought to us by a college student who was in that situation, and just curious if you have any comments on that, if there's any red flags for you, because you're so involved and you've done so much to clean up that whole recovery home industry. Just want to make sure we're on the right track and you don't have any objections to that.
Thank you, Representative Skidmore. It's good to see you again. I'm going to bring up Al Johnson, because our task force is aware of that. I'd just like him to say a few words.
There was a positive feedback, but there was also negative feedback about that one issue. One of the things that people were concerned about is the use of dollars for out-of-state residents in state schools. I believe it originated as anybody who's living in a recovery residence would then have that voucher or free tuition. And so while we did not endorse it as the task force, it is an issue that would be helpful to those people. Clearly, if they are Florida residents, I think the task force would be 100% in favor, but if they're out-of-state residents, there are too many others who are deserving, who don't get that same allowance.
Follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Yes, you're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, I appreciate that input. It's not free tuition, though, I just want to make sure we understand. It's just in-state tuition. So the dollar amount is per credit hour a little bit less than an individual would pay. So in the road to recovery that we are hopefully encouraging the folks who are here in Florida to accomplish, we thought that it would be an encouragement, if you are here, you are working, employed, that you would get, for lack of a better word, a discount on your tuition. So I just want to make sure we're talking apples and apples.
Yeah, Representative Skidmore, I will bring that back to the Sober Homes Task Force, because the first go-around was free. The in-state tuition, I think we get a more favorable response, and we'll let you know.
Thank you so much.
That's coming up later this month.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from Representative Rick Roth.
Thank you, Chair. And yes, State Attorney Dave Aronberg, you are very popular. So my point is just to make one comment. In my five years in the Legislature, two issues have risen to the top that really need to have a facelift and be addressed, and being understood is something that everybody needs to be able to have access to, and that is like mental health issues in the schools, and then also opioid addiction and other types of addiction. I was privileged to go to the Forum Club a couple of years ago, I think it was a 211-sponsored event, and they had a gentleman there, I think it was related to the Kennedys, or Peter Lawford, or something, I can't remember his name. But the bottom line is, the realization that we need to, we do need to maybe do an upgrade of the name Sober Home Task Force, because this really is not just a druggie, you know, deal. It's middle-class, it's people that have sports injuries, people that have major surgeries and get addicted. We're dealing with a lot of that, with, you know, things like medical marijuana, but it's just, we need to continue to push forward the concept that this is a crisis that can affect everybody. It's not just that group over there, it's not just people that are It's not just people that are down on their luck. It's everybody. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, you may. You're recognized.
Representative Roth, thank you. Dual diagnosis is a major part of the issue. You have people with mental illness and combined with substance abuse, it creates unique issues and you're right to pay attention to that. And as for the event that you're referring to, it was a 2-on-1 event. It was actually about five or six years ago. Peter Lawford, who is related to the Kennedys, he was so passionate and that was such an important speech he made. Sadly, he passed away a couple of years ago from a heart attack and his legacy lives on, on these issues. So thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you. Anybody else from the delegation? We're good? No, I just wanted to say it's been a pleasure and an honor working with you over the last few years on, on the Sober Home issues. You and Assistant State Attorney Al Johnson, who I think he's still behind you. It's, you guys make it, make it easy and, and your dedication has just been unsurpassed. And, and you know, through that, I think everybody in the, in their communities have seen that we've gotten rid of all the bad actors or most of the bad actors at this point. And while protecting those that are fighting addiction, I think that's the key to the whole, the whole, what we're dealing with here. So I appreciate all your service and thank you. Look forward to working with you in the future and this year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the delegation. Thank you for everyone here.
Thank you. Okay, back to announcements. Let's see, local bills. A local bill hearing will be held on Thursday, October 28th, 2021. The Clayton E. Hutchison Agricultural Services Center at 559 North Military Trail, West Palm Beach, Florida, 33415. The deadline for submittal to the delegation office for all local bills is Tuesday, September 28th, 2021 at noon. If you have any local bill questions, please contact Vicki Nolan in the delegation office. Replays of today's meeting will be shown on Friday, September 3rd at 11:00 a.m. and Sunday, September 5th at 1:05 p.m. on PBC TV, which is available on Comcast, Channel 20, AT&amp;T Channel 99, and streamed 24/7 on the county's website at PBCgov.com. I want to remind everybody, we appreciate you wearing your mask at all times during this hearing. If you do not wish to wear a mask or do not feel you will be able to continue to do so through the full hearing, you may submit your remarks to be read into the record. We appreciate your cooperation and respect the health and safety of all that are attending. Members, do you have any announcements you'd like to have, make before we get started in the public announcement? Nope, we're good. So moving on, there being none. You will have, we had originally scheduled three minutes. We are running behind today, so we're going to change public comment to two minutes. So you'll have two minutes to complete your presentation. If members have questions, they will ask them after your comments have been completed. Please begin your comments by stating your full name clearly for the record. So first up is Catherine Uden, Oceana, South Florida Field Representative.
Good morning, delegation members. Two minutes, that's tough. My name is Catherine Uden. I am the Southeast Florida Field Representative for Oceana. Oceana is the largest international advocacy organization dedicated solely to ocean conservation. I am here to ask the delegation to make it a priority to repeal the preemptions on plastic bags and polystyrene foam food containers so that local municipalities can better reduce plastic pollution in their communities. Thank you so much to Rep. Casello, Rep. Skidmore, Senator Polsky, and Senator Berman for supporting and cosponsoring those repeal bills last session. An estimated $33 billion pounds of plastic enter the ocean every year. That's roughly the equivalent of dumping two garbage trucks full of plastic into the oceans every minute. Plastic harms birds, sea turtles, and marine mammals such as Florida's beloved manatees. Plastic contaminates our seafood. Plastic breaks up into tiny pieces called microplastics, which are eaten by fish. While we begin to realize the extent of plastic pollution's effect on the oceans, plastic production is increasing at a rapid rate.
Excuse me, Ms. Uden.
Sure.
We could have a little quiet there in the back while the public makes their presentations. Thank you. May continue. You have approximately a minute and 10 seconds.
Thank you. The petrochemical industry is investing significantly in the future of plastic production. Global production of plastics is now projected to nearly quadruple by 2050. As plastic production increases, so will the amount of plastic entering the oceans. Projections show the amount of plastic in the ocean will triple by 2025. Plastic is a climate issue as plastic is made from oil and gas. The Center for International Environmental Law issued a report identifying plastic as a major source of greenhouse gas emissions, producing nearly twice as much as the aviation sector. Reduction of plastic waste should be included in climate action plans. Plastic is also bad for human health. In a 2018 report, the American Academy of Pediatrics warned parents against serving their children drinks and food in Plastics 367. Recycling is not enough to solve the plastic pollution crisis. Waste management solutions cannot realistically keep up with the rising rates of plastic production. Our state relies on tourism and plastic litter blights neighborhoods, fouls our beaches, and clogs storm drains. Policies governing the production and use of plastic can be effective in curbing the plastic production pollution problem. Thank you, and please do not hesitate to reach out to me for more information. I look forward to hopefully seeing many more of your names on the plastic repeal bills this session. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Uden. It's a very important issue and we might need to start looking more towards reusing glass like the old days. Any questions? Vice Chair Polsky.
And Senator Berman as well. I just wanted to let everyone know with the help of Oceana and others, we were able to get an amendment in this past session to do a study on plastic pollution. I know that's not much, but there hasn't been one done in 11 years. And we recently checked and that study is getting underway. So hopefully, if we have some good information, we can keep working on it. Unfortunately, the way preemption laws have been going in this state, it's going in the wrong direction where they're not allowing individual cities to make these important decisions for themselves. So I am not optimistic, but we will continue to fight alongside you. Thank you.
Thank you so much for supporting that study.
And one more. Senator Berman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say that we are bringing a bill that's sort of tangentially related this year and I hope you can support it. And that's to require companies to pay for each ton of plastic they import and then pay local governments for the cost of recycling that plastics. And that was a bill that was done in the state of Maine. So hopefully, that will also contribute to reduction of plastic.
Thank you so much. Extended producer responsibility is very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll call on Chelsea Krebs. Yes, more questions? Representative Hardy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a question. I, I don't believe in putting the onus primarily on individuals to change their behavior with respect to this. We really need more systemic reforms, right? But in the absence of these reforms, what can individuals do who are concerned about this, who might have heard some of the things that you've said? What are some decisions that we can make in our everyday lives to do our part as far as reducing our plastic consumption and pollution that results from that?
Sure. Thanks for that question. As I was stated before, you know, we can switch to reusable things anytime that you can think of something reusable instead of something disposable because there is no way, right? It has to go to the landfill or somewhere. So switching to more reusable, refillable systems. I know I brought my reusable coffee cup today. But you know, a lot of times it's really hard for consumers because even if you want to avoid plastic, it's difficult. It's hard to find a shampoo bar, for example, at your local store. So you know, we really need to look toward, you know, companies and asking our stores and restaurants to switch these products. I know that, you know, foam is very harmful to our health. So when I go to a restaurant and they're serving in foam, I let them know that, you know, I don't serve my children food in foam and, you know, think about using a different product. So asking our, our local restaurants to switch.
Thank you. There being no other questions. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Chelsea Krebs. You have two minutes.
The big time.
It's working?
Are you going to use the timer?
You're, you're good to go.
Go ahead and start. We'll let you know when you're done.
Good morning. My name is Chelsea Krebs and I'm an FAU graduate. So it's good to be back here today. The reason I'm here today is because since 2003, I have been an animal care volunteer at the South Florida Wildlife Center in Fort Lauderdale. And I'm very lucky because I get to take care of possums, squirrels, turtles, beautiful waterbirds, birds of prey, and owls. Because I love animals, I'm very concerned about plastic pollution in the environment. And at my wildlife center, I've seen such terrible suffering because of simple things like straws and bottle caps and six-pack holders. And I know one doesn't seem so bad, but it only takes one. I've seen perfectly healthy animals that refuse to eat and then die. And their necropsy reveals that they had a piece of plastic fork or a few inches of fishing line in their intestines. And sometimes pelicans swallow whole plastic shopping bags and it kills them. And the solution to this problem is as simple as just bringing your own tote bag to Publix. And that's something that every person in this room can do every day. What I'm asking the delegation to do is to repeal preemptions on single-use plastic bins, like the one that Florida has on plastic bags right now, unfortunately, so that local municipalities can reduce pollution in their own communities when they're ready to. I know that in the past, Representatives Casello and Skidmore and Senator Polsky and Senator Berman have cosponsored preemption repeal bills. So thank you for doing this. Thank you for protecting home rule. And, you know, for the last 18 years, I just wished people would use less of the plastic that kills the animals at my wildlife center. And I know that's not going to happen without your help. So please help make that happen. Thank you.
Members? Representative Willhite.
A statement. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, ma'am, Representative Casello and I have both filed a bill to try and charge more money for businesses to take water out of our aquifer and out of the state of Florida. And obviously, clearly, that got strict, strong opposition from a lot of people in Tallahassee. But what they put the water in, maybe we could get them a surcharge to start paying for some of that or the disposal that the state of Florida, our local governments have to do for the disposal of that plastic. So Representative Casello, maybe that's an avenue. Instead of trying to get Tallahassee to agree to start charging people for taking one of our natural resources away, maybe we can start getting them to start paying for getting rid of it or protecting it in the plastics that they put the water in. So that's a thought, maybe if they won't give us the protection on one side, maybe we can get it on another, on the backside of it because it does have to be contained in a bottle. So that might be an opportunity for us.
My understanding of the bottled water, especially in places like, you know, like you said, places in central Florida, is that companies like Nestle, who sell the bottled water, pay a one-time tapping fee to access the water and then they can take as much as they want forever and bottle it and sell it. And that's, that's just so one-sided.
Yes, ma'am. The latest one was a increased consumptive use permit that they got in the central Florida area for taking millions of gallons of water out. And all it was to increase their permit. It wasn't even a one-time. It was ridiculous on what they were able to get. So Representative Casello and I were trying to address that without success in Tallahassee. So maybe we can continue to try it on the plastic side. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any others? Members? Nope, we're good. Thank you, Ms. Krebs. Appreciate it.
And you can call the South Florida Wildlife Center if you find injured or orphaned wildlife. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Drew Martin, Loxahatchee Group Sierra Club. You have two minutes.
Drew Martin, I'm here on behalf of the Sierra Club. And I wanted to start, and I bring this up every year, when I look around and I see all these water bottles on the dais there and I say, boy, wouldn't it be great if you could set the example? And this would be what you could do. You could put, and in fact, Representative Murray asked the question, yes, you could have this bottle now. Sierra Club was happy to pay for this bottle for the delegation so you can each have your own bottle. So if you want to make an arrangement with us, we'd be happy to do that. You could have tap water, then you could fill this up. Bottled water is 35,000 times worse for the environment than tap water. It's also a burden on, on the poor when they feel they have to buy bottled water. So as well as what Representative Willhite said, it's also a burden on the environment. In fact, in California, where there's a drought and a heat wave, there's still a bottling company, Nestle, that is bottling that water. Other things you can do is you can bring your own straw. This is a bamboo straw. You can bring your own silverware. This is bamboo silverware. It goes through security very well because it's not metal. Wherever you go, so that you don't get, and when you go to get, take out food at a restaurant, ask them not to put anything in the bag. If you're taking that home to eat, they don't need to put plastic in the bag. It saves the restaurant money. The Sierra Club is in the process right now of suing Coca-Cola and Nestle because of their claims that they, their bottles are being recycled. And we believe that that's not true. Most of those bottles are not getting recycled. And that's really a tragedy. And if you watch the story of plastic, you will see what is happening to the environment. And I hope all of you will watch that. Am I out of time?
10 seconds.
I also want to mention canopy trees real quick. Very unfortunate legislation passed a couple of years ago that allowed people to remove canopy trees without permits. And I hope you will reverse that legislation. Thank you so much for your patience.
Thank you. Hang on. Members, any questions? Comments? Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Martin. Okay, next up, Kate Ariza, South Florida Science Center and Aquarium, President and CEO.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm very happy to be here with you today. My name is Kate Ariza and I am the President and CEO at the South Florida Science Center and Aquarium. If you haven't been to us, we are located at the intersection of I-95 and Southern Boulevard, right in the heart of Palm Beach County. The Science Center, we have a very simple mission. It is to open every mind to science. In 2019, we saw 350,000 visitors through our doors and we host the most popular exhibits in the world, such as Titanic, bodies, dinosaurs, and King Tut. The Science Center now has just entered a $45 million capital campaign to double in size. When this new Science Center is completed in early 2025, we will be the fourth-largest Science Center in the state, with only Miami, Tampa, and Orlando larger than us. This expansion will include a three-story, 40,000-square-foot facility with prominent visibility on I-95. I'm very pleased to announce that we recently secured a lead gift in this campaign of $20 million from a private donor. Marketing studies commissioned by us forecast more than 500,000 annual visitors in our sustained year and over 650,000 visitors in opening year, making us the number-one ticketed attraction in the county. The project will generate $51.6 million in economic output during construction and over $46 million in economic output annually once completed, supporting more than 488 FTE jobs long-term. We will be constructing a new STEM education facility that will fill the region's workforce pipeline with qualified STEM workers. We have a local Palm Beach County team in place and shovels will be in the ground a little over a year from now. We will be seeking an appropriation from the state and we look forward to briefing you all individually on this project in the weeks and months to come. Each of you has been given a booklet that goes into far more detail than I just did. I look forward to having your support and anytime you would like to come to the South Florida Science Center, please let me know and I'll give you a tour. Thank you.
Members? Thank you.
Yes.
Senator Powell.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Ariza, for coming before us today. I've had an opportunity to look at this proposed development, expansion, and I had the opportunity as well to meet with Mr. Lou Crampton to discuss this. And I'm very excited. The idea that this is the number-one ticketed attraction in Palm Beach County, it sits in my district, and with a two-year-old that me and my wife are always looking for new and exciting adventures to take her to. We're really excited about the South Florida Science Center. Of course, me being from Palm Beach County, I remember our field trips when I was a kid, going to the zoo and the Science Center and looking at the galaxy. So I'm excited to be able to get ready to take my daughter over there as well. So this is really awesome. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And we do appreciate your support in the past, Senator Powell. Thank you.
More than welcome.
Members? Anyone else? Well, I just wanted to say that thank you for your presentation. You know, I raised seven kids in Palm Beach County and the old, the old Science Museum, now the Science Center and Aquarium, was just a constant go-to, you know, during the summer, during the weekends, and, and both stimulating of mind and body. And I would And I, I would encourage, if we could, if I could ask Vicki to put together a field trip here.
Vicki already mentioned it to me before we started, so yes.
For the whole delegation. We'd love to come and take a look at what you've got there now and what you've got planned. It's been a while since I've been there, so.
We would love to have you. I mean, in the past decade alone, we've raised $20 million for the facilities that we have now. So, it's probably changed greatly since all of you have been there, so we would welcome that.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Angie Hatfield, you're next. Is she here? Don't see anyone moving. Okay, we'll move on. Larry Reine, Child Net.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Larry Reine, Child Net, CBC Lead Agency, Community-Based Care Lead Agency in Palm Beach County, operating the foster care system for the children of Palm Beach County. I apologize to those of you that I haven't seen in over a year. It is a pleasure to see you. I think there's no delegation in the state of Florida that supports foster care better than this delegation. At least four members of this delegation have aggressively and effectively worked on behalf of special appropriations requests for our foster care children. At least one member of this delegation has taken a leadership role throughout the state in promoting foster care issues, so I thank you. Fortunately, things are shockingly good despite the pandemic. Our numbers are reasonable. Our caregivers, our foster parents, our service providers have stepped up during this difficult time, and we are doing, performance in the last quarter on the DCF scorecard was actually the best it's ever been. That said, we have a very challenging problem. It's a problem statewide. It's a problem not only in our industry, but it's one we need to finally address, and that is the instability of the foster care workforce. The FCC, the Florida Coalition for Children, which is our organization of all the lead agencies and all the service providers in child welfare, will be coming to the legislature with a request for between $25 and $30 million statewide, specifically to create a minimum starting salary of $45,000 for dependency case managers and to create a salary structure so that they have a career path and don't leave us to go become teachers and leave us to go become therapists. So, I very much look forward to working with all of you during the coming session on behalf of that initiative in particular. Thank you very much. I never thought I'd do it in two minutes.
Great job.
Thank you.
Members? Any questions? Representative Rick Roth.
Thank you, Mr. Reine, and thank you for everything you're doing. I'm a big supporter of the Florida Coalition for Children. I'm curious, could you share with us what, what you think prompted this major, significant appropriation of $25 to $30 million? Could it possibly be a difficulty in retaining employees due, due to what state employees are now making in the state of Florida? Could you, could you specify a little more clearly, please?
Sure. And it's a combination of things. One, statewide, the starting salary is abominably low. It averages elsewhere in the state of Florida around $35,000 to $37,000 to start. As other state workers, including those that work for the state, including school board employees, make more than that, it's harder for us to recruit. Then, it's been a sort of dead-end field where there's no way to go up. There's no career path, and that's what part of this appropriation will hopefully create. It'll create a salary structure so that they have somewhere to go within the field. Then we add to that, obviously, the challenges everybody is having in recruiting staff now. So, so it's a combination of things. And this, and it's, and it's about more than just money. We will tell you that. We're going to have to do a lot of work to change the image of that job, to make that job more bearable, and to not have these people be the poor brunt of everything that rolls downhill in the child welfare system.
I'm just over for the moment. You may follow up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Senator Polsky. Thank you. Yeah, so to be a little more, I, I kind of gave you an open-ended question, because I wanted, didn't want to, to prompt you, you know, in the front, so I guess I'll have to prompt you in the back. My understanding is from talking to people in the foster care system and Florida Coalition for Children, that they're having a hard time keeping employees, in part, because the state employees are now being guaranteed a $13 minimum wage. Could you speak a little more, could you speak a little more to, if that's it, and, and a little more to the difficulty? Is there, is there a, you know, has there been a significant change in the last year retaining or hiring employees?
So, again, the issue is one that is longstanding, the instability of that workforce. We accept, as an industry standard, for years, Palm Beach was actually the best in the state, with an annual turnover rate among its dependency case managers of 28%. That's not acceptable. That shouldn't be acceptable anymore. So, it's longstanding, Representative Roth. But then, in addition, we have people who are actually leaving the field and going to work at fast-food restaurants and other places where, in fact, their minimum wage approaches what they're making as dependency case managers, and Lord knows, it's a far less stressful job. It is not one around the clock. It is not one having to go deal with crises and emergencies. It is not one where you have to sit in court and listen to members of the process blame you for not having done things. It, it, it is a combination, but thank you for the lead, even if you had to go behind.
Thank you, Mr. Reine. Representative Hardy.
Thank you. You know, I just want to say that it's impossible to divorce conversations about what these folks are making from conversations about the revenue or the lack thereof that we have in the state of Florida, and the fact that we need to raise more revenue as our economy grows and as our budget needs continue to grow. One of the reasons why these folks are not able to get the, the, the pay that they need is just because there's not enough money in the system. And so, I very much appreciate your highlighting this issue. We need to realize that all these things are connected when we go to Tallahassee. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative.
Any other questions? There being none, thank you.
Thank you all again.
Thank you for your hard work and service. Okay, we'll move to Justice Ira Robb, League Women Voters, Voting Rights Coalition. You have two minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On behalf of the Palm Beach County League of Women Voters, I thank you for the opportunity to address you about redistricting. The League, as a nonpartisan organization, strives to improve the functioning of and participation in government. I will be brief and blunt. You will soon redraw the lines based upon the 2020 census. The League appreciates the importance of your task. It is so important that the League worked for a successful passage of the 2010 Fair District Amendments Five and Six, which lay down the conditions for your task. These amendments are quite clear, and I quote, "The legislative districts or district plans may not be drawn in favor of or disfavor an incumbent or political party. Districts shall not be drawn to deny racial or language minorities. The equal opportunity to participate in the political process and elect representatives of their choice. Districts must be contiguous. Unless otherwise required, districts must be compact, as equal in population as possible, and where feasible, must make use of existing city-county geographical boundaries," close quote. "The League knows that redistricting is controlled by legislative leaders and that it affects each of you in a personal way. The last redistricting, Amendments Five and Six, was disregarded, and when secret plans were devised and passed, the court struck it down, and the current maps were eventually imposed."
Ten seconds.
"The League asks that you confer with your legislative leaders and urge them to follow the letter and spirit of Amendments Five and Six. This time, have a real, open, and fair process that will create districts that you can run in and that are not strained by another attempt at partisan manipulation."
Thank you, sir.
"Although the United States Supreme Court said it will not overrule partisan--
Thank you, sir. Thank you. You have two minutes.
Can I just have one more line?
One more line.
Okay. "The people of Florida change the Constitution to require fairness in the task ahead of you. That is the standard by which you will be judged: fairness." Thank you.
Thank you. Members? Representative Hardy? No?
Good.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. No questions. Move on to Paul Owens, President, 1,000 Friends of Florida.
Thank you, Chairman Caruso and Vice Chairman Polsky and other members of the delegation. I'm Paul Owens, President of 1,000 Friends of Florida. We're a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization based in Tallahassee, but we've been engaged on Palm Beach County issues since our founding in 1986. We believe in smart, sustainable development to accommodate growth while preserving our environment and quality of life. We consider most of the items on our legislative priorities for the 2022 session to be worthy priorities for your constituents in Palm Beach County. In a short time I have, I'm just going to highlight three. First, restore the right of Floridians to challenge development orders that are inconsistent with local comprehensive plans. The legislature changed the law in 2019 to put those Floridians at risk of financial ruin if they lose their challenge. In a state growing as fast as Florida, citizens need to recover this right to make sure their communities are growing according to the vision in their comp plans. Senator Berman and Representative Casello attempted to write this wrong a couple of years ago. We'd like to see another attempt. Second, conserve more natural and agricultural lands before they're lost forever to development by maintaining historic funding for the Florida Forever program. The budget passed last session turned out well for land conservation, but most of the money came from Washington. We'd like to see another strong year for conservation funding, no matter how much money Congress provides. And we would like to thank Senator or Representative Roth for sponsoring a bill last session to extend bonding authority for Florida Forever, which is a great way to stretch funding for the program and take advantage of historically low interest rates.
Ten seconds.
Finally, fully carry out the recommendations of the Governor's Task Force on blue-green algae and red tide. Legislators got a good start with the Clean Waterways Act, but our water quality problems are far from solved. Thank you.
Thank you. Members? Questions? Representative Hardy, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me ask you a question about development and growth in the state of Florida and how to preserve our environment while making sure that we have spaces for the people who are moving here to live. Thousand people a day move into this state. Palm Beach County, over the last 10 years, we gained about 66,000 households. We permitted only about 43,000 additional housing units to be built during that time. There's a gap. That gap is basically the extent to which demand is overwhelming supply for housing, right? And so, my concern is, as folks continue to move to the state, how do you suggest we manage the development pressure that is the necessary outcome of folks moving here while also preserving a kind of, I don't want to say a heckler's veto, but preserving the right that Floridians had enjoyed until recently to basically sue cities and sue developers for allowing people to build the stuff that we live in?
Yeah. We think if, we believe in an open, transparent, reliable, and predictable process of evaluating development, and we think if those primary principles are pursued at the local level with a backstop at the regional and state level to make sure that those developments are, adhere to state law, that we can accommodate growth without sacrificing our environment and our quality of life. If it's an open process that, that engages citizens, we have confidence that it's going to meet the need to accommodate growth without having permanent irreparable damage to our environment and our quality of life.
You. Oh, Representative Roth, you have a question? And, 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 Mr. Owens, if we could limit your response to 20 seconds?
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
So, thank you for the shout-out for Florida Forever. I, I predict we are going to get some strong funding for Florida Forever this next year. It is a top priority in the legislature, particularly with the amount of people that are moving to, to Florida and the idea of protecting wildlife corridors. I think you're going to see more of that type of legislation. I'm going to put you on the spot, Paul, for a second, because it's, the number one issue right now, and, and the people in Palm Beach County don't think about, is the new Losom with Lake Okeechobee. And so, I'm going to ask you an open question, and just, I don't know where it's going to go. Obviously, the Corps has gone up with the Charlie-Charlie Plan, which has a minimal increase in the amount of water that we can have for the citizens of South Florida. Do you know of anybody in the environmental community that is objecting to them doing the Charlie-Charlie Plan, given the fact that we had, like, like Representative Hardy said, how many people have moved to Florida, South Florida in the last 10 years? The amount, and the fact that agriculture production is actually going down on a per-acre basis in South Florida, that it's people moving to Florida that need more wa, security of water supply? Do you know of anybody in the environmental community that is objecting to the Charlie-Charlie Plan? Because, because, you know, we need to be able to have more options what to do with the water, including storing it in Lake Okeechobee.
Right. Thank you, Representative Roth. I wouldn't, I wouldn't presume to speak for the environmental community. I know that's a very complex issue, and there's a lot of, of interests, all with, with good intentions on all sides of that, but I think it's going to take a lot more negotiation to make sure that nobody is, is hurt by the plan that's ultimately adopted.
Any other members? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Mark Schneider, ACLU, Palm Beach County. You have two minutes, sir. You start the clock.
Esteemed senators and representatives, my name is Mark Schneider. I'm president of the local ACLU. We have 4,500 members who are your constituents. We continue to press for legislation on three of our issues of concern, criminal justice reform, voting rights, and immigrants' rights. With regard to criminal justice reform, we're interested this year in seeing a reduction in required gain time before prisoners can be released from prison. Last year, Representative Caruso introduced a bill to reduce gain time from 85% to 75%. We hope you might sign on to Senator Perry's bill, which will be reintroduced, which would reduce gain time from 85% to 65%. And I would just point out that in Texas, the average time served on a sentence is 58%. So, 65% would be more or less in line with a comparable state and what's going on there. With regard to voting rights, we expect Senator Thurston to reintroduce a bill from last year, and we would encourage your support of it. One of the things that it does is it allows for same-day voter registration. I think if you consulted with supervisors of elections, you would find that they can't see any need today with our high-tech society to have a 29-day blackout period for registration for voting. So, we would encourage you to support that part of Senator Thurston's bill. Another part of it would make General Election Day a paid holiday. Many, I'm afraid, of our citizens don't come to think about elections until right before the election time.
Five seconds.
They're not able to get time off, so having that a holiday would be great. And then, finally, on immigrants' rights, my only counsel is abide by the physician's prescription to do no harm. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we move on, if you could just stay there, do I have a motion to extend the meeting?
Second.
A motion? Do I have a second? All in favor?
All right.
Okay, we'll extend the meeting.
Or what?
We're going to extend it 20 minutes. Any questions for Mr. Schneider? There being no questions, we appreciate your comments.
Thank you all.
Diane Bueller, Friends of Palm Beach. Two minutes.
Good morning. My name is Diane Bueller. I am the founder of Friends of Palm Beach, a nonprofit with a mission to support a cleaner environment through beach cleaning and community education. My ask is you put me out of business by removing preemptions on single-use plastics and allow local municipalities control over their own environment. Friends of Palm Beach cleans seven and a half miles of Palm Beach's coastline to the tune of 600 to 900 pounds of trash a week. To date, we are tipping the scales of a staggering 209,000 pounds of beach trash removed. Of that, roughly 85% is plastic, and of that, 90% is just single-use plastic. And that is only a minor dent in our waterways and highways, continuous burden of trash and plastics. Our day is like the movie Groundhog Day. We show up, we pick up, we dispose of, we repeat the next day, and so on, each week of the year since 2015, roughly 250 pounds a day. Unfortunately, many Florida citizens do not understand the impact that single-use products have on-- Unfortunately, many Florida citizens do not understand the impact that single-use products have on them. We are ingesting a credit card's worth of plastic a week. With proactive laws, resolutions, and ordinances banning these harmful everyday single-use products, which are a clear and present danger to our health and the health of our environment, we can educate the masses, but not when state preemptions tie our hands. And the solution is really too simple. Recycling is not the answer. Beach cleanups are not the answer. We need plastic surgery. We need to cut out the single-use plastic product from our use. We, the people, and you, the elected officials of the people, need to have one voice for the sake of our health and the health of our paradise that we live in. For current and future generations of Floridians, please take actions towards removing preemptions so we can ban these products altogether and happily put me out of business. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Members? There being no questions?
I just want to say thank you. I had an opportunity to talk to you last week, so thank you for your work and what you're doing.
Thank you for your time.
And we hope we end your job soon. Thank you. Megan Enriquez, Coalition Against Period Poverty. Ladies, you have two minutes.
Hello. Okay. You're starting? Okay. Okay. My name is Megan Enriquez. You may remember us from speaking at public hearings last year. Well, good-
Could you take your mask off, please?
I really prefer not to, I'm sorry.
She chooses not to.
I'll speak clearly.
Okay.
Yeah. Good morning. Today, we're going to talk about something that may make some of you uncomfortable, but in reality, it shouldn't. We're going to be talking about periods, the menstrual kind. When we discuss this topic, we use the term menstruators for people affected to acknowledge that periods are not limited to cisgender girls and women, but also trans and non-binary people. CAP was founded in May 2020 to advocate for policy change, including the dispense of free-ven period products in school restrooms. We believe that the inadequate access to menstrual hygiene products, also called period poverty, is an issue in our community that we can end together. Thank you for you, thank you for listening to our comments. We appreciate your dedication to the community, and with your help, we can get closer to eradicating period poverty in Palm Beach County and all of Florida. We would especially like to thank Senators Polsky and Berman, as well as Representatives Skidmore, Casello, and Wollhite for co-sponsoring the Learning with Dignity bill last year. This bill helps us achieve our goals. Seeing your names as co-sponsors was a very exciting moment for us. We deeply appreciate you listening to what we have to say and taking action to help. This is a very important topic to us because, as students, there are many outside factors that can distract from our education. Having a period should not be one of them. We have no say as to when or how our body changes. After convincing our school to place these necessities in our restrooms, we've helped many students when they need it. I personally noticed that we no longer have to ask for pads from a friend. There's less of a stigma, and students who menstruate don't have to leave school early. There's an experience that every student deserves. Just because we're fortunate enough to have them means there's a lot of families in Palm Beach County who cannot afford these products, which is exactly why it's so important that you co-sponsor the Learning with Dignity bill that we expect to be refiled by Senator Book and Representative Greco.
Thank you. Members?
Any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you again. Dominique Blandon, Ayndolly, Coalition Against-
Yes.
Oh, you've each got up. Okay.
Yeah. So hello, I'm Dominique Blandon Ayndolly. And you may remember me from last year, and today I'm going to be talking to you guys about period poverty. So period poverty is not something that is well-known or talked about because of the taboo surrounding it. But hopefully, these statistics can give you some insight into how much this issue affects today's youth. According to a joint study by the brand Fink's and Period titled "The State of the Period", one in five teens in the United States have struggled to afford period products or were not able to purchase them at all. To add on, more than four in five students in the U.S. have either missed class time or know someone who's missed class time because they didn't have access to period products. Furthermore, 80% of students feel that there is a negative association with periods and that they are gross or unsanitary. And 71% of students that were surveyed felt self-conscious during their period. This stigma must end. All of these statistics are poignant examples of period poverty, which is the inadequate access to menstrual hygiene products. When menstruators don't have access to hygiene products, they are forced to use unsafe alternatives such as rags, newspaper, or cardboard, which can all lead to physical health risks and infections. Nationwide, people who menstruate are ostracized from basic activities or socializing just because they're not able to get the proper necessities. Taking that into account, what we must do is think globally, act locally, and join the fight towards ending menstrual inequity. At a personal level, please don't be afraid to talk about periods and normalize them. Educate your kids, family, and friends to not associate periods with shame.
Ten seconds.
Thank you for your time and your commitment to the community, and thank you for your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Thea Dahl-Peterson.
Oh, my name is Kate-
If you have anything to add.
Yes. Hello, my name is Kate Langford. I'm new at Grand View. I'm a freshman. And here is some work that can be done to combat period poverty on a national, local, and personal scale. On a national level, four states, California, Illinois, New Hampshire, and New York, require public schools to supply restrooms with free tampons and pads. We are hopeful that Florida will join this list in the near future. Furthermore, Florida, along with 20 states in the U.S., have ended the discriminatory tampon tax. And as of 2019, Florida has also begun providing free period products for menstruating inmates. On a state level, we expect Senator Lauren Brooke and Representative Mike Roco to file the Learning with Dignity bill for the upcoming legislation session. This bill is the main reason we are here. It would require school districts to make menstruational hygiene products available free of cost to students in restroom facilities of public K-12 schools. Lastly, on a local level, the Coalition Against Period Poverty is working against period poverty in Palm Beach County by starting the pilot program in scarcely-
San Lucius.
San Lucius Community High School that places free period product dispensers in four restrooms across the school. Eventually, our goal is to see every single student in Palm Beach County have access to free period products. By placing these dispensers in restrooms, these necessities are an accessible place for any menstruator in need. Although we are proud of every piece of progress that has been made, we have to continue to be better. On an international level, Scotland is the first country in the world-
Ten seconds.
-that has made period products completely free to anyone in need. It would be of great help to Grand View, CAP, and everyone in the community of Palm Beach County if you would co-sponsor this.
Thank you. Any questions? Representative Skidmore.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Thank you, ladies, for being here again. It's wonderful to see you. I did talk to Representative Greco about being a prime cosponsor on your legislation that you are supporting, and I look forward to working to get this issue more attention than it has received in the past. Appreciate you being here today and educating us on this issue. I know in my district, especially out in the Glades area, you know, some girls miss up to five days a week, some menstruators, sorry, I'm still learning the right language, miss up to five days a month of school because they do not have access to these products. So it is, it is an issue that has a lot broader ramifications than many people think, and I appreciate you bringing it to us again. And I just want to tell you that I am committed to helping you gain awareness and attention to it. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Skidmore.
Members? Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Susan Saladino. You have two minutes.
Yes, hi, thank you. And I apologize for those graphic photos, but sometimes you need to see with your own eyes about how bad things can be for tethered dogs. Grateful for this opportunity and for all those who support a ban on tethering. I thank you very much, and I hope I can help open the hearts and minds of the others who are considering this. Americans do love their pets. $100 billion was spent in 2020 on pets. Yet, I still wonder why there's millions of dogs being murdered in shelters each year, and I also wonder why they're still stuck out on the end of chains, living a life of loneliness and despair. And also, they do become a public health hazard because they, due to, it's called territorial defense behavior. That's what scientists call it, behaviors call it. They can develop aggressive tendencies. So I'm here to ask you to listen to the experts, and the experts all say the same thing, that tethering is an unacceptable method of confinement for any animal and has no place in humane sheltering. A child that enters a yard that's bitten by, and gets bitten by a dog that's tethered, or the dog gets loose and bites a kid, that is not bad parenting. That is bad dog ownership. My personal experience with dogs gives me an in-depth opportunity to express and observe what I have with my own dogs. One dog I found in my neighborhood years ago, she, it was a hunting dog, probably a little over a year, and she, it took me four days-
Ten seconds.
-to reach out to her, to get her to trust me enough to come to me. She had, she had open wounds around the perimeter of her neck. And she took her five years living with me to stop barking at my husband because she has such fear issues.
Thank you, Ms. Saladino. Thank you.
I could have gone on for a day.
Yeah, I understand. Any questions, members? Any comments? Representative Casello.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question. Do you believe in tethering dogs in the back of a moving truck, automobile?
Oh, heavens, no. Tethering a do-, oh, tethering a dog? No, tethering a dog is, is, it would be something around its neck, and it can jump out and choke itself. So I'm against tethering a dog. Yes, they have to be contained so they don't jump out. So if you need to take a dog from point A to point B, either put it inside your vehicle, like you would your child, or you can put a crate in the back and get it from A to B, as long as the car ride is not too lengthy, where, especially in Florida, the dog will succumb to the elements.
Thank you, Ms. Saladino. Follow-up?
I might have used the wrong terminology when I said tethering, harnessed.
A dog har-, a dog harness goes around the body. The tethering, yeah.
Excuse me, but I understand all the restraints. But I'm asking you, are you in favor in having those restraints in a moving vehicle, in the back of a moving vehicle, open vehicle like a truck? We saw the dog couldn't jump out and hurt himself.
Well, it would make sense to keep the dog from jumping out, yes. And if you're, if someone is putting their dog in the back of a truck and they're not inside, inside, you know, a crate, then it's best to use a halter type. But dogs have still jumped over and gotten injured wearing halters on the back of a truck. So I'm in favor of if you're moving your animal, to move it, to put it and contain it inside your vehicle.
Thank you, Ms. Saladino. Follow-up again?
Just, we're filing a bill that will require dogs to be harnessed in the back of open vehicles. Right now, there's currently no law that allows that. So what we're hoping to do is make those animals safe by trying to get this passed.
That would be much safer. As long as, as long as they're kept, there's no, there's no leash that would allow them, even with the harness on, you know, there has to be language in it because people just sometimes don't have the sense to, you know, to do the right thing.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Saladino. Okay, moving on. And Ms. Saladino, I'm sure everyone's touched by the handout you put out there, so thank you. Charmaine Postel, Parent Teacher Association, PTA. You have two minutes.
Good morning, Chair, delegation members, and staff. Congratulations, Chairman and Vice Chairwoman, on your appointments. So greetings from Palm Beach, from Parent Teacher Association. Our mission: Making Every Child's Potential a Reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. Charmaine Postel, Advocacy Chair at Palm Beach County Councils of PTA, PTSA. We would like to thank all of the Palm Beach County delegation members who have worked with us this past session, speaking or attending the county council events, or simply stopping by and asking our input as parents. As we move forward this session, we seek your continued support on many of our Florida PTA legislative priorities, including school and student safety, gun safety, early childhood education, and et cetera. Today, I would like to focus on assessment and testing. In Palm Beach County, our marginalized students are facing tremendous impacts with respect to the proposed concordant benchmarks and how it will currently impact FY22 graduates. More importantly, the significant equity issues within subgroups in this proposed benchmark that came out in 2019. Currently, the estimated impacts are: Black females, 64%; black males, 59; Hispanic females, 71; Hispanic males, 66; white females, 89; white males, 87; student with disability, 73%; English language learners, 36%; free and reduced lunch, 63%. Again, those are the estimated graduation rates here in Palm Beach County for our FY22 graduates.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Sorry. Representative Hardy?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Chair, Ms. Postel, for her advocacy on behalf of these students. There are lots and lots of issues we have to address, and the assessments are both part and parcel of the problem. So thank you, and I appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Representative, and we look forward to working with you all in the upcoming session. So thank you very much.
Thank you. If you have anything to hand out, we'll be happy to, to-
I'll send it directly to, because this came before us at the District Diversity and Equity Committee at the school district as a chair. That's where I learned this information, so not as a parent. And so I, this just, last Thursday came to our attention, last, yesterday evening, spoke at the school board meeting and addressed this, and they will be putting it on their legislative priorities. And so I felt compelled to come before you as a delegation to also address you so that you are aware of the issues here in Palm Beach County.
Thank you, Ms. Postel.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Okay. Do I have a motion to extend again the meeting? A second? We'll go another 15 minutes. I'm going to, to get through this, we still have quite a bit to go, a few of these, and then I have to read some stuff into the record. So therefore, we're going to drop the public comment time to a minute and a half. Next up is Brian, and I'm sorry, cannot, Galvin, Galvin, Brian Galvin. You have a minute and a half, sir.
Thank you. First off, I'd like to say thank you to all the comments relating to plastic pollution and these ridiculous preemptive laws that restrain the government from protecting its people and the health of the state. Thank you, distinguished delegates and representatives, for being here today to hear my comment. My name is Brian Galvin. I'm a Florida native, born in Titusville, Florida, in 1990. I have been a resident of Palm Beach for over 20 years. Florida is an amazing state. Beach cleanups and ocean plastics have grown steadfast to become a normal part of life, and it's not normal. Plastic pollution is not natural. In 2017, I walked the east coast of Florida over 300 miles in 20 days. I removed one ton of plastic pollution, and I recognize that this is a problem. Plastic is plaguing us. In 2018, I founded Plastic Symptoms and Environmental Retification, a nonprofit. In 2019, I pioneered a plazestreck nearly 1,400 miles, walked, swam, and paddled around the Florida coastline from Fernandina through Miami's South Beach into the wilderness waterway, around the 10,000 islands up along the Gulf Coast until I reached Pensacola. We collected about two tons of mostly plastic pollution and documented more than 10 times that amount.
Ten seconds, sir.
Today, I helped manage a cleanup with Diane Bueller, a crew with Friends of Palm Beach, and organized beach cleanups with local Palm Beach communities, cleaning beaches along Palm Beach up to seven days a week. We must end preemptive state laws that restrain local governments from protecting their- We must end preemptive state laws that restrain local governments from protecting their health and fragile Florida ecosystems.
Thank you, sir.
Banning the use of single-use plastics and polystyrene in delegation meetings could be a good start to addressing the plastic pollution epidemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Members? There being none? Thank you, sir, Mr. Galvin. Next up, Alyssa Freeman, Marine Industry Association on Palm Beach County. Thanks for the little hustle up to the microphone.
Yes, yes, thank you. Thank you for the time. Good afternoon. My name is Alyssa Freeman. I'm the Executive Director for the Marine Industries Association of Palm Beach County. Boating has a more than $23 billion economic impact in the state of Florida and more than $2 billion in Palm Beach County supporting tens of thousands of jobs. It includes nearly a million registered vessels and an estimated 400,000 vessels that visit Florida annually. Marine Industries Associations throughout Florida support legislation and ideas that promote boating in Florida and will preserve it for generations to come. In addition to being advocates of public access to our waterways, we believe in conserving our resources so everyone now and in the future can enjoy them. We've narrowed down some of our issues as you enter the next legislative session, and we're here to serve as a credible resource for you and for your staff. One is anchoring and limiting local governments' ability to limit boating on state waters because it causes confusion for boaters coming from out of state or out of the country. Mooring fields, we want to promote the building of mooring fields to provide cost-effective dockage for boats and sanitation facilities for water quality. Boat ramps, we need to invest in boat ramp infrastructure. We are struggling as a state to provide an adequate boat ramp, adequate boat ramp access and parking. Workforce, we support workforce incentives for marine-related jobs and certifications at high school, college, and the technical school level. Protection for working waterfronts, we support protecting existing boatyards and marinas from local ordinance that could limit their business. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak and for your service.
Good job. Thank you. Questions, members? No questions. Thank you so much, Ms. Freeman. Okay, Larry Benson. Mr. Larry Benson, not present. Okay, I've got a few things to read. This is one from Judea Johnson, 33 Southeast 88th Street. Boca Raton, 33432. I urge the delegation to support a special session to ban vaccine mandates and forced masking of school kids. Also, please support HB 6009, removing forced vaccination laws and repeal Florida statute Any comments? There being no comments. Got public comment from Kimberly Dees, 89, Bryan Place, Fort Lauderdale. I ask the delegation to put Florida families first by supporting HB 6009 and remaining Florida's, and remaining Florida's forced vaccine law and repealing Florida statute 381.00315. I also ask the delegation to support a special legislation session for the purpose of protecting freedom and banning vaccine and mask mandates in Florida. That's it. Any comments? Any questions? Any further business, members? There being no other, what? Motion adjourned, second? Meeting's adjourned.[1753.01][1753.01][1753.01]